Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting on 2/22/22. In case you didn't know what today was, and it's a Tuesday. Just saying. Tuesday. All right. So we'll call the meeting to order, and first order of business is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to call up Pastor Robert Castro from the Cavalry Chapel Church today. And Pastor, thank you for being here and leading us in our invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I want to thank you for the privilege, actually, of being here this evening to present this invocation. And if you will bow your hearts with me, please. Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, that as we're meeting here, as this council is meeting here, and with all the different areas to consider and different presentations to be brought forth here tonight, Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit would grant wisdom to this body here. Lord, there's so many different areas of managing a city in a changing environment and economy and into the future, things to be planned for, to safeguard our city through our police and fire, through all of our first responders, Lord, and to just bring this city along in a way, Lord, that's prosperous, that is safe. Lord, I pray that you would equip all of these members of this board with your Holy Spirit, with your wisdom, courage when it's needed, Lord. And of course, I know, Lord, you love our city, you love the streets of our city and the people that call this place home. Lord, I pray and invite you tonight to be here again with your presence, your Holy Spirit, to lead, guide, and equip all of this, Lord. And of course, it's in the matchless name of your son that we lift this up, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present. Mr. Huddleston via teleconference?
So noted.
Glad to have you back, Bob.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, the minutes, our next agenda item?
Okay, the minutes, you've done the roll call, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The minutes we've got, we have the ones that we're going to approve for the city council regular meeting minutes of February 7th, and then the rest of these we accept for the record. And we consider and accept the planning and zoning commission minutes of January 6, 2022. Consider the acceptance of the youth commission minutes of January 8, 2022. Consider the acceptance of the police personnel retirement board minutes from January 21st. Consider the acceptance of the police personnel retirement board minutes of February 9. And I move these, that we approve these.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. All the minutes are approved. Next item is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated February 2 through 15, 2022, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. They are approved. Next item is our meeting agenda approval. Does anybody have any changes? Anything from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. We do have a special presentation tonight, so if I can ask our finance director to come forward, she's here. There she is. Which we've received numerous years since 2012, and I think there's a spot for 2020-21 there, but it's not there. So is it coming in the mail?
It's in.
All right. So this is from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's out of Chicago. It's the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, otherwise affectionately known as the GFOA, has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city of Casa Grande for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. The report's been judged as an impartial panel or by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate this financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. It is, it's a very excellent report. It has a lot of good factual information in it. I use it all the time when I'm meeting with folks. So I just want to say congratulations to you and your staff. All right, we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. The, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on council that needs to remove anything or wants to remove anything? Bob, anything you want to remove?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody, staff, anybody in the audience?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item H, and this is a call to the public. So this is an opportunity, I will open the floor. For anybody here who is present that would like to address the council, remember to please keep your comments to three minutes. And also, I want to remind everybody that we, since it's not an agendized item, we cannot discuss it, but we can give staff direction to follow up at a later point. So anyone here who'd like to address the council? You guys are letting us off easy.
We've been doing a good job.
I know. I guess so. All right, well, then I'll close the floor and we'll move on. Next item is the first item on our, under our awards of contracts, which is item I, I-1, considering approval of resolution number 5386. And Chief, I see you in that spot.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I learned a new word today, palindrome.
Palindrome?
Same forward and backwards. 2/22/22, same thing backwards and forwards. Pretty cool. I'm here to talk to you tonight about awarding a design builder contract to Core Construction for our new fire station 503. We're requesting the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Core Construction to serve as our design builder for our new fire station, and initially authorizing an amount of $626,000 for design build services and $64,432 for pre-construction services for the design phase. The total amount requested is $697,17. We received a total of seven statements of qualifications when we sent this out, and they were all received by October 18 of 2021. The clerk's office received the seven proposals. We did the interviews in accordance with Arizona state statutes and the city's procurement code, and Core Construction was selected as the most qualified contractor who could provide the best value for the project. This project is in our 2021-2022 Capitals Improvement Plan List that you approved, and that's why we've come before you this evening to ask for this resolution.
Chief, I just have one question. Have we decided where it's going yet?
Yes, sir. It's northwest corner of Pinellas and Rodeo.
Okay. I wasn't sure that that had been made public yet, but I must have missed it. Oh, it's in the report. Okay. No, I think that's a great, great spot, so. And then what timeline do you think?
We're not absolutely positive on the timeline. They're still running into supply issues and stuff with the different projects, but the commitment that they made to us in the interviews was about a 14-month period from start to finish. But I can tell you that, for example, our block wall project and overhead cover project that's going on at Fire Headquarters was supposed to last for four months, and we're about six months into it right now. So the supply issues are definitely still hitting. Kevin can tell you about this stuff. I mean, the supply issues are incredible.
We hear it everywhere. And then one other question. So that's an ADOT signal, right? But we still have control over the signal?
It is an ADOT signal, but we already have control over that signal. We have an optocom system on that signal that's maintained by Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
There, and we'll have to do some modifications to that once the fire station is in there, and we'll work through all those issues.
Additional lighting?
I don't know about additional lighting, but typically on an intersection like that where you're coming out from rodeo, we turn everything red, with the exception of eastbound rodeo. So all three would stop, and the fire engine would come eastbound on rodeo, no problem, and then go whichever way they're going to go.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Let's get it going.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, seeing no questions, then I'll entertain a resolution, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5386, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal for professional services from Core Construction, Inc., to provide design build services for fire station 503, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract by the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5386 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Okay. Moved item I-2, which is consider resolution number 5382. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to enter into a construction manager at risk contract with AGP Electric to construct a new traffic signal at the intersection, excuse me, traffic signal and intersection improvements at the intersection of Jimmy Kerr Boulevard and Sunland Gin Road for guaranteed maximum price not to exceed $733,599. As you are probably aware, Jimmy Kerr Boulevard and Sunland Gin Road is a very busy intersection. Sunland Gin actually has direct access to I-10 with an interchange in the city of Eloy, and it also provides access to many businesses in that area. So a lot of traffic in that intersection. If you've read the paper of late, we've had some serious accidents at that intersection, so of course, getting this project done has been a priority for staff. We started this, the design of this project quite a while ago. A lot of different things happened during the process of designing this signal and getting it ready for construction, but we finally got it to the finish line, and we want to move forward with the construction now. The selection of the recommended construction company was done per the requirements of ARS 34-603. AGP Electric has been working with staff to finalize the construction details, working on lead times for the equipment, the scheduling of the project, and resulting in the proposed maximum guaranteed price. The total cost of the project is $1,257,229. This price includes the contract with AGP, which is the $733,599 contract that you're approving tonight. But there's also a component for UPRR, the railroad, at a cost of $523,630. And this price includes a $40,000 contingency, and that's to interconnect the signal with the railroad crossing so that they work in concert. We did budget for this project in this fiscal year, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any question. We did require a $310,000, $837 budget transfer to cover the cost overruns with that. I apologize, I forgot to mention that.
Kevin, is Jimmy Kerr in there? Is that a state highway or is it not? Is it just a county road?
It is not. It used to be a state highway, but they turned that over to the county.
Too bad.
No assistance.
Kevin, glad to see it, especially after, you know, this week there was protests out there. So I know it's been a long time coming for you guys, and I appreciate getting it going.
Any other comments or questions on it?
What's the timeline on that, Kevin, before it really happened?
Dwayne would probably have a, he would probably have a better idea of the construction schedule.
That's why I'm here.
I didn't want you to feel left out.
So the big issue's going to be the supply chain problems. So ordering the equipment for a signal used to save four to six months. Now we're saving nine months to a year. So it could be as much as a year before we have it totally completed.
Sure that 1.2's enough money?
Right now it is. No guarantees.
God, the way things are going. All right, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Kevin. All right, I'll entertain a resolution, please, Gloria, for I-2.
Resolution number 5382, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from AGP Electric, Inc., to provide construction management, manager at risk services for the Jimmy Kerr Boulevard and Sunland Gin Road intersection improvement project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the execution of a contract, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5382 as presented, and also, it's dangerous without that stop sign there. There's been a lot of people that have run right onto the highway, so I think it's a good, a good project.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item I-3. This is considering approval of resolution number 5383.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the expenditure of funds for the purchase of two trailer-mounted portable changeable message signs from RoadSafe Traffic Systems in Phoenix, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed $45,166. Staff released a solicitation for these two message board signs and received two bids. The lowest bidder at the time of the bid submittal was K&amp;K Systems, but their product did not meet the specifications. Of the 16 specifications that we outlined in our solicitation, they did not meet 10 of those. So we are moving forward with a request to purchase from Road Traffic Systems in the amount of $45,166. These, these units are used for a variety of purposes from our streets department. They, they help us identify construction work zones, emergency traffic control, identify special event traffic control, and advise notice of future roadway and roadway closures. And we did have adequate funds available in this year's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a comment on this, you know, and I'm disappointed that the 16 specs were not made by the one company, but I'm glad that we don't lower our standards just because we have two bids. So thank you for sharing why they didn't get that bid.
Well, on this equipment, we have existing message signs, and we like to keep the equipment as consistent as possible so that we only have to train on one, one thing. Even though if, if somebody was the low bidder and it was appropriate equipment, we would have purchased it.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no other comments, then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria, on I-3.
Resolution number 5383, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from RoadSafe Traffic Systems, Inc., for the purchase of two trailer-mounted portable changeable message signs, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to RoadSafe Traffic Systems, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5383 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-4, resolution number 5384. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Young Swenson and Cross Paving, Inc., for the Santa Rosa Pavement Reconstruction Project for an amount not to exceed $964,796. And this does include a contingency, a city-controlled contingency of $42,000. I don't have that number correct. $42,000 and some change. I apologize. Typo there. We did do a formal solicitation, and we received five bids for this project. Our, the Young Swanson and Cross Paving was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. We did do reference checks, and they've done quite a bit of work in Arizona, so we feel comfortable moving forward with them on this project. This project is very similar to the project we did to the subdivision just to the east, or excuse me, to the west, which is the Rancho Grande project that we completed several years ago. So we're going to be going in, doing soil stabilization prior to our repaving in that area. We found through our, our test holes that the soil conditions were very similar, so not wanting to take a chance and put pavement down on poor subgrade, we're going to go ahead and fix that up. We do have adequate funds after some transfers to cover the cost of this project in our budget. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Do we put aside, how far in advance do you give the neighbors' notification?
That's all worked out with our contractor at the time when we do the pre-construction meeting, and we'll go over what our, our requirements are. But typically, they're putting out notices well in advance, and then through our web or our Facebook pages, if there are changes in the construction schedule, we'll, we'll use that to reach out to the residents.
And do we let people know what, how much money this city and they're getting back in terms of their tax? You know, in other words, this money is that the city collects primarily through sales tax, but goes back into their, into their neighborhood?
Yeah, most of these funds are coming from HERF dollars.
Okay, we're even HERF dollars.
I will use the revenue funds, so that's where we cover the cost of these projects.
Yeah, that's, that's their money, too.
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
So I guess my point was, do we try and let people know there's reinvestment being put back into their neighborhood?
We currently don't have a program where we put up signage associated with that, but it's something we can definitely look into.
Can we look into that, Larry? Because I think as we move forward, and if, if RTA ever gets, you know, a decision by the Supreme Court, that was a plan we were going to do with the RTA. And your RTA dollars at work, right, your, your regional transportation dollars. This can be, you know, our local transportation dollars at work. It can be just a generic sign that we could maybe move it around, right? Like, just like you do your no-construction trucks or something. You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely. We'll look into that, and maybe we just have a, a small sign we put over the main sign that says the, the funding source.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Short and sweet. On the words. Listening, okay. All right, no other comments, and I'll entertain a resolution number for I-4, please.
Resolution number 5384, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Young Swenson and Cross Paving, Inc., for the Santa Rosa Pavement Reconstruction Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Young Swenson and Cross Paving, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5384 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, let's move to item I, I-5, resolution number 5385. Kevin?
Yes, staff is recommending the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Wilson &amp; Company for an amount not to exceed $629,998 for the wastewater capacity improvements conceptual design study. Of course, the city of Casa Grande is experiencing accelerated growth all around the city, including multiple large developments and industrial manufacturing complexes that are being planned to come online within the next 24 to 36 months. Currently, our wastewater facility has a capacity of 12 million gallons a day as designed. However, we only have a discharge capability today of 6 MGD. So that's just one of the many things that we need to do with our existing facility to get our capacity to that full 12 MGD, and potentially maybe look at some infrastructure changes that could potentially increase the capacity of our existing facility. So going to be a very detailed study of what we have in place and what we need in the future. The study will develop a conceptual design report and cost estimates for the infrastructure improvements to increase the wastewater collection system. to increase the wastewater collection system necessary, as well as the treatment capabilities. We'll be looking at some large collection system lines in the west part of the city to bring new industrial flows to the existing plant until such a time that a new plant might be needed or we expand the existing plant. So a lot of things that are unknown right now as we move forward through a lot of this economic development, trying to put a strategy in place to stay ahead of this, this growth curve that we're on right now. We did put fifty thousand dollars in owner's contingency in, in that amount as well, so we do have that to fall back on if needed, and that is a city-controlled contingency, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Powell?
We, we'd mentioned earlier in the meeting about using that type of water. Is it, is it potable, or is it, what kind of condition is it in when it comes through and out of the plant?
So we're currently treating to a level of A-plus effluent. It's, it's close to as good of water that we can get our effluent to, but as part of this project, we're going to be looking at increasing the quality of that effluent so that we can take advantage of potential direct inject recharge.
So we'll be able to use some of this directly then?
Yeah, we currently reuse quite a bit of this at the golf course, at the SRP generation plant, and we're going to be on a, on a project that you've already approved. We're, we're doing the final design on the constructed facility, which will help us get recharge credits, and then we currently have our, our wash facility, which is our permitted facility, which we're getting credits from today. So we're looking at a lot of those different opportunities, as well as working with Arizona Water on potential future projects to partner with to take advantage of our effluent.
Too much water, I'll tell you.
Every drop counts.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a resolution for I five, please Gloria.
Resolution number five three eight five, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Wilson and Company, Inc., engineers and architects for the wastewater capacity improvement conceptual design study, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Wilson and Company, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to Pinell County.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution five three eight five as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is I six, an ordinance, this is an ordinance number three three two three.
Thank you, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Empire Southwest, LLC, and they are an authorized Caterpillar dealer, and we're going to be using the City of Tucson Cooperative Contract for Fleet Services for heavy equipment, parts, accessories, supplies, and related services. Focus of this contract is for the purchase of parts for our seventeen pieces of heavy equipment that we have in the city, as well as the sanitation division's fleet and the parts that are needed for that as well. Caterpillar has the cooperative contract with the City of Tucson for municipal purchasing, and it's identified as contract one six one five three four. Now, due to the aggregate amount of our daily purchases that we make, it throws us over that threshold to have a contract in place, something we've not had to go through in the past, but because of our procurement policies, this cleans that effort up. So that's what the contract will do, is, is this is our daily purchases, we don't know what we're going to need until we start working on a vehicle, and these are those aggregate amounts. And in our vehicle and equipment supply line item in that operating budget, we currently have a budget amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand. Obviously, we don't have a remaining amount of eight-hundred-and-sixty, but that's our budgeted amount, and then we also have a vehicle, equipment, and maintenance and repair line item that has a total amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand two-hundred-and-six dollars. And we also take advantage of fund transfers if we run short on those line items, so we'd want, we would want authorization to utilize any appropriate fund transfers to cover the cost of the purchase of these parts, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Bob, any questions? Sorry, I forgot you were there.
Okay, no.
Okay.
Chime in if you do, so.
I will.
All right, seeing no questions or comments, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, three three two three on I six.
Ordinance number three three two three, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Caterpillar, Inc. for heavy equipment, parts, accessories, supplies, and related services for fleets, for fleet services, authorizing the expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Empire Southwest, LLC as an authorized Caterpillar dealer in accordance with the terms submitted to City of Tucson.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number three three two three as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is I seven, and another ordinance, this is three three two four.
Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a, a contract with Genuine Parts Company, doing business as Napa Auto Parts in accordance with the Arizona State Contract CTR zero five four five zero seven to purchase parts and supplies for fleet services. This is very similar to the, the last request, this is a contract for our daily parts purchases. In Casa Grande, it's known as Merrell's Automotive, that's the Napa dealer here. So it's our daily purchases for all of our police and fire platforms, one hundred and thirty-four light duty trucks, one hundred and ninety-one medium and heavy duty trucks, and equipment, as well as our fifty-seven trailers that we maintain, so again, we, we don't know what we're going to be purchasing until we start working on something, and then this is the contract that gets us to stay within our policies. And again, we're utilizing the same line items, the, the vehicle and equipment supplies at eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, and then the vehicle, equipment, maintenance, and repairs line item at two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand two-hundred-and-six dollars, and of course, any tran, fun transfers that are needed to meet the needs of the fleet services department. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and both of these use that same funding?
Yes.
Okay, and then Merrell's Automotive, so you purchase your parts through them here in Casa Grande?
That's, that's where we get a, a large amount of our parts, I'm not going to say it's the only place we get parts, because today, we're getting parts places we never thought we would need to get parts from, so.
But we try, but we try and get them locally, right, through them?
Yes, yeah, if we can, if we can procure locally, that's our, that's our preference.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain an ordinance number for I seven, please Gloria.
Ordinance number three three two four, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Genuine Parts Company, DBA Napa Auto Parts, for the purchase of vehicle and equipment repair parts for fleet services, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to authorized vendors in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona State Bid List and, and the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number three three two four as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
There's another one right there. All right, we have no boards and commission reports tonight, so we'll move to item K, which is our additional action required by the council, so K one is considering ordinance number one three nine seven dot oh eight dot three zero. Kevin?
Thank you, staff recommends that the mayor and city council amend section eight point zero eight point zero three zero, refuse collections of our City of Casa Grande, Arizona Code of Ordinances to allow others to collect recyclables. The City of Casa Grande, of course, suspended our curbside recycling program in July of twenty nineteen for a myriad of reasons, and since that suspension, staff has been looking at many avenues and options to provide residential, residents an efficient and economical curbside recycling program, and we just have not been able to come up with a viable option. However, there are commercial companies out there that believe they have a business model that can provide curbside services and could potentially provide other types of recycling services in the future. However, our code, the way it is written right now only allows the city to provide refuse services, and the language says ore recyclables, so the request tonight is just to remove the ore recyclables portion of the code, so that would allow companies like, I think we've heard the name Recyclops thrown out several times at city council meetings, as a company that could come in and provide those services. We would have no connection with these companies, no affiliation with them, they would be operating like any other business in town, separate from any in-city involvement, so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Lisa.
I know we're just taking out the, the one, you know, just recycling, but if, if in the future, there's something that comes up and we think that we might get back into it, we would just come in and change it again and include recycling in it, or do you think this is?
This has zero impact on what we could do in the future to provide recycling services. The only difference would be, we would be competing with the private industries out there, and we, we need to come up with a plan that would be, you know, cost-effective to compete against them, but it does nothing to keep us from, from providing those services.
Anybody else? Yeah, Matt?
Thanks for looking into this, Kevin, people are excited, people want to recycle. I know it's not efficient for us, but this is a great opportunity for people that do want to recycle, and also, you know, businesses to the private sector to do what they can to help their problem, so thanks.
Mayor, and I know that the company has already sent out postcards to many people, and fellow councilwoman, Mary Cordson, was very excited that she received hers, because this was something that she was very passionate about as well, so.
All right, we'll see no other comments or questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria, on item K one.
Ordinance number one three nine seven point zero eight point three zero, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending section eight point zero eight point zero three zero of chapter eight point zero eight, garbage and refuse collection and disposal of the Title Eight Health and Safety of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code pertaining to recycling services, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Mayor?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number one three nine seven point zero eight point three zero as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote, please Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Thanks, yeah, he did, we had the same vote, so.
It's all right. Did you get that okay, Gloria?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. All right, next item is item K two. Gloria, this is over to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item did not appear on the consent agenda because we did not have a unanimous vote at the last meeting, so we just have a reading and then a voting. Ordinance number one three nine seven point one seven point five five, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending all of the setback tables of chapter seventeen point two zero residential zones of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code to update the minimum setbacks for all of the city's residential zone districts, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance and establishing an effective date.
All right, so this is just a second read, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So is there any comments or questions on this? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve, you've read the ordinance.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one three nine seven point one seven point five five as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell.
I would like to move an amendment on there that any, any prop, the minimum setback or the maximum would be five, they have a three, a three footer in here, and that's like this right here, it makes no sense. I know you're not going to do it, but that's what I'd like.
Is Paul here? Paul, can you address that, please? Because that's not being changed, correct?
Mayor McFarland, members of council, that, that is correct, the setback for the R one A zone district as it sits today is a minimum of three on one side and ten on the other, which results in a separation of buildings of thirteen feet, side to side typically, so that's factual. Procedurally on the amendment, I guess we have to ask the city attorney to address that issue.
Right, and, and I, I think it's appropriate to answer the question, but we cannot, we're in the middle of a vote right now, so you can't actually make an amendment, you need to defer prior to this, to this thing, but to that, that section of the code is not being changed by this amendment.
So can we make an amendment to change it at this point right now?
We would need to go back at this point, or you could do a motion to reconsider later, but you'd have to start your process all over as a first read again, probably a public hearing, you know, we'd likely try to start over, but and you've already received, I think, five votes.
We're not changing the setbacks on the sides.
No, what I would, what I'd like to see is that there would be no setback used under five feet. A lot of them are five, ten, five, whatever, three feet.
We already have it, we already have a three-foot setback, correct?
An R one A.
Yes, that's the existing code.
One particular zone.
But we could, we could look at that later.
Again, we, we are in the middle of a vote, I never want a stymie discussion, but it was moved, seconded, and five members have already voted.
Yeah, so, so we are in, in a vote, Mr. Powell, if we want staff to look at that, we can, we can certainly do that later.
Yeah, maybe we could set that up for another meeting or whatever, if that would be okay, but as I say, this anything under five shouldn't be a setback on side yards or whatever, so in my, what I can do.
We can have that discussion later.
No, I know.
Okay, so what is your?
You take me down.
What is your vote on this, on this particular question, then?
How would I vote on it, I guess yes, so it'll go through and be discussed.
Okay.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay.
So we'll move to item K three and consider final adoption of ordinance number one one seven eight point three one two point one.
Appears for a second reading, did not appear under the consent agenda because it did not have a unanimous vote at the first reading. Ordinance number one one seven eight point three. reading. Ordinance number one-one-seven-eight point three-one-two-point-one, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to the change Pinell Commerz Center planned area development to the park at Three Points Planned Area Development for property generally located west of Pinell Avenue and south of Cortson Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
And Mayor, if I could, just to remind everyone, the reason it did not receive a unanimous vote is Councilmember Fitzgibbons recused.
Okay.
On himself, from a voting prior one, and I assume is doing so again today for the same interest.
Right. Yes, and I will abstain from voting.
Okay.
I was wondering.
Okay.
I didn't think I was counted in since I did recuse myself, but.
Okay, so, this is just a, a re-vote, and you've read the ordinance, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number one-one-seven-eight point three-one-two-point-one as presented.
Second. All right, a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons abstaining. Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Powell?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. Now, last item on the agenda is K-four, consider approving the fall election for the city's, uh, twenty-twenty-two primary and general election.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff recommends that council authorize the call of election for the city's twenty-twenty-two primary and general elections. The city's primary election is scheduled for August second, twenty-twenty-two. This election will be held for the purpose of nominating candidates for mayor and three council seats. Mayor McFarland is eligible for his fourth term. Um, the council members' seats that are up is Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Herman, and Councilmember Huddleston. Any candidate that receives a majority of the votes cast at the primary election will be declared, elected to that office without having to run at the general election, which is scheduled for November eighth. The city does have an ordinance that establishes, um, the methodology for determining the majority vote, um, used at the primary election. The city clerk's office did present an overview of the election process on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, um, in the council chambers. All persons that were interested running for the mayor or council seats were invited to the session. Nomination packets are available electronically on the city's website, and also available, uh, by hard copy from the city clerk's office. Candidates, um, seeking nomination for mayor and council members will be required, um, to obtain, to obtain at least three-hundred-and-seventy-two signatures and not more than seven-hundred-and-forty-three signatures from qualified registered, qualified registers, uh, voters of the City of Casa Grande. The last date to file nomination pota- nomination packets is April the fourth at five P.M. Uh, during this election, our, our candidates, uh, were able to, um, obtain signatures electronically. Um, I believe all of our candidates that are eligible currently to run are using that process. Um, additionally, in the general election on November eighth, uh, we will be including a proposed bond measure and charter amendments. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the, or actually for the call of elections for the City of Casa Grande, uh, for the primary, the twenty-twenty-two primary and the general election. Mayor McFarland, I move approval?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Not the aye.
That's an aye?
Okay. All right. Uh, I think that's it. Besides reports. So, um...
Before the meeting's over, can I ask one more question on that three-foot thing? Or can I not?
Since we're gonna be discussing it potentially at a, at a later meeting, um, I think you should ask it potentially after the, the meeting to Director Teis or, or I.
Seems to me too, it could be a real safety factor with, with something three feet away. If you had a fire or a need to get out of a window, then it would not be a...
And I, I certainly understand that, and I think it, it may be good for you to, to speak to Director Teis, um, because it's, it's three feet, but it's another additional on the other side. So you're not that close to, to another home. But again, because it's something that I believe we're gonna be discussing at a later, uh, council meeting, either through a study session or any motion or ordinance that you wish to, to support, uh, we shouldn't be talking about it any further during the meeting tonight.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we'll move to, uh, reports. Then, uh, I'm gonna go to you first, Mr. Powell. Any reports?
Sure. Uh, we've got a, a group that's gonna present on the last day of February in Parker to the Native Americans there, the Crips, and, and go through, uh, showing them what can be done. That's, what's, what's really, what's really a problem right now is how do you get water into those two dams? 'Cause there's, unless it's something before it gets to it, that, that gets in it, and that's what we've been talking about in the pipeline. But we, uh, the we would, there's several people that are gonna be involved that are, uh, in the water issues, and so, uh, I'm looking forward to that and, and, uh, hope we can make some progress.
All right. Lisa, how about you?
Um, not much, but I, we did, this Thursday is going to be the point in time, the homeless count, and so I just wanted to, you know, thank Mary Allen with the city and the police department's helping coordinate that. There was a training last week, and I'll tell you, I was so impressed with the number of people that showed up. I think they have over, well, just about fifty people that are going to be participating in the count this year. So there's eight teams going out. They're meeting at the CG Helps Resource Center. I would invite people to participate, but you had to go through the training, so if you haven't done that. But, um, but you know, Chief, Chief, I, I just wanted to thank the police department. You know, there is, there's just been so many compliments from the, the agencies that serve Pinell County, and they're just so impressed with the City of Casa Gran and what they do to support them and the homeless and what they're doing to, you know, work in the community. So, you know, Chief Laos and Wendy and Sergeant Inkstrom, they're just, they just do such a fantastic job. So, I want you to know that it is recognized, and these guys bragged about it at the meeting, you know, so the agency, specifically Cara. So, thank you to the police department. They'll be with us on, um, on Thursday. And it's such an important, um, count, you know, it's how they, they receive funding through, um, housing and, and everything, so it is important. So we'll be out there, um, six A.M., right? You're participating here?
I'll be there.
Donna, are you gonna be there, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll be there. And, um, you know, a couple things, as far as, you know, we, of course, celebrated the big win of the football Casa Grande Union, but you know, we can't forget about the cheer team.
Yeah.
You know, um, there's other sports that are doing great, you know, a great job, and Casa Grande Union Cheer Team got second place in state, and, you know, we've, Matt and I have, and you, you've participated in plenty of those cheer competitions, and it, it's just so impressive when you see this group of, of ladies and, and the cheer coach, Katie Kramer, and what she's done to the program. So congratulations to the cheer team. And of course, Casa Grande Union Band, you guys probably saw on the paper, you know, they have a big, Mr. Hebda, my favorite teacher at the school, um, is doing such a great job pulling all the schools together and doing a concert on Thursday. So, um, if anyone wants to come up to the high school.
Six-thirty to seven-thirty.
Yep. All the junior highs, and I'll be there, too. And high schools will be performing. It's his first annual music gala. And so, um, again, a great program at the school, so a lot to celebrate in, in our school system.
It's pretty neat.
That, that's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, a few things. Uh, tomorrow night is the Chamber Mixer at the new Best Western hosted by Texas Roadhouse. So that should be a pretty good one to go to. Ribbon cutting at four. I was leaving that for you, but thanks. And so, uh, neat thing, March, uh, being in Casa Gran is the best month, but by far a busy month. So just next weekend, we have, on March fifth, not next week and the weekend after, we have the plein air event, um, the outdoor painting contest, uh, the chamber home health and garden show, as well as car show, and that's hosted by Jones Ford at their new, soon-to-be new location at the Sam's Club. So that'll be a neat thing. And then Main Street Marketplace on the fifth, and Main Street has something every Saturday in, in March, not to mention other nights in March. So, it's an exciting time to be in Casa Gran, and it's gonna be awesome. And, uh, we're done with the wind. Did you order the wind this week, Mayor, or was it?
No.
Okay, well, we'll find out who did, but thanks.
Donna?
Um, just a couple things. It's been really busy. Um, hats off to, um, Steve Hardesty, the master, uh, the Community Service Master Plan kickoff, um, uh, virtual was held. I was really impressed by the number of people that took time out, and it was about an hour and a half, but it went by really fast. And then Steve, um, for helping organize the charging station. Larry did not get me my, um, my car, elusive, but that's okay. Um, and then I wanted to remind, tomorrow, uh, is going to be here at City Hall at six o'clock, districting for, um, the county. And as Lisa said, the point in time. Also, I just wanna end, um, there was some really good, uh, media coverage, um, on, um, social media. Uh, there was a lady that was out enjoying the carnival, out at our park, lost her debit card, and, uh, reported it to the police shortly after. An officer, and I didn't get his name, um, called her, and a twelve-year-old had actually turned her card in, and the officer hand-delivered the card back to her house, and, and her three-year-old got to enjoy some time in the police car and stuff. Not driving it, just, but it was really nice to, to see somebody saying good things, so. Kudos to the police department. That's it.
Bob, do you have anything you wanna mention? If your voice can handle it?
Uh, just, just happy to, uh, be back in, uh, limited capacity, and I do hope to be present at the next scheduled council meeting.
Excellent. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you.
We miss you.
You're in our prayers, Bob.
Thank you.
Right. Um, and just, uh, uh, not to add anymore to the, uh, Community Service Master Plan, but you can go online to the city's website. Uh, the website for that is www dot planyourparks, as in plural, cg dot com. And, uh, all of the updates are there, uh, the information from the virtual community meeting is there, and then any future information, you can kind of follow along as the plan progressive progresses. And I'm going to imagine there'll be some input, uh, opportunities in that as well. So, keep that in mind, it's your parks, so, uh, give us your thoughts. Um, I did have the opportunity to plant some desert plants over at, uh, Firehouse 501 on a drizzly morning last week. So we planted a couple Laccatillos and some other desert plants, so that, all that decompressed granite now looks like it's got some life in it. So, which, so it looks good. Uh, as part of our Save It program. Uh, the State of the City, I wanna remind everybody, the State of the City address and interactive activity will be March eighth, which is in about two weeks. And, uh, all of your council members will be involved, or those who can be involved will be involved. So come see, uh, what your city's up to. Uh, you have to make a reservation, please. You can go online to the city's website and just put in State of the City address, or just State of the City, and Google it, and it should pop my picture up. And then right below my picture is, uh, is the RSVP button that you can press and, and get, uh, tickets to the event. It will be at the community, uh, it's gonna be at our community, uh, center, which is over on Peert. It will start at twelve-thirty. There's a reception. We might even some live music. There'll be some desserts, uh, some Latino flavor to it. So, uh, come check it out, and then, uh, the presentation will begin sharply at one o'clock. So that's on March eighth. So please look for that, and love to see everybody there. Uh, it's a, it's a very good opportunity to get an update on your city.
You know I have one more thing when you're down there.
Okay. Let's see. I did also a water presentation at Central, or the Center for Rural Leadership, um, which, thank you to my fellow council members for being there.
Good job.
And, uh, I appreciate the support and your, and your being there. And, uh, anyway, it was very interesting. We had, uh, the chairman of the board for the CAP was there, Terry Goddard, past, uh, mayor, mayor of Phoenix, and also, uh, governor of Arizona.
He quoted you, too.
Yeah, I know. I'm glad I went before him because he, he used my name a lot. But anyway, it was, uh, it was a good, good interaction, good meeting. Uh, I also attended the S- State FFA, the Blue and Gold Banquet last Saturday up in Phoenix. It's for the state, supports the state FFA clubs.
They get some state funding.
Huge, about five-hundred-and-fifty, uh, people at the event, and, uh, they raised a lot of money for, for the young people and for the clubs. So, it, it was a great event. And then also got the opportunity to go over and see how Buckeye puts on an airshow. So, I was the guest of the mayor over there, and we, we chatted. Um, I got some good contacts for some, uh, some airplane information that maybe I'll share with the city. Um, no, I will, I'm kidding. So, uh, that was, that was, uh, an interesting weekend anyway. And then, uh, we had, I had a NASA meeting this morning. So NASA is actually coming to Arizona with a, a aeronautics program for drones and also automation. So we're part of that conversation, thanks to GPEC and our, our membership in the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Uh, so there, more to come on that. That's a pretty, some pretty exciting information. And, uh, then I also had a meeting with Senator Sinema, Sinema today, and she wanted me to tell you all hello, and that, um, she is working hard on, on our infrastructure. The bill that she helped get passed, but now needs to get out of the, the last hurdle and actually get implemented. So she's in the implementation mode. And I reminded her that I need, needed, we, I, we needed another hundred-and-fifty million dollars for I-ten, so, so I put that bug in her ear.
Did you remind her about the youth commission?
No, I didn't. I forgot, sorry.
Hear that, Anthony?
I still need to, I'll, I'll call. Be better than doing it in that surf ending anyway. Anyway, that's all I've got. Uh, thanks, everybody. And, Mr. Powell, you had one more thing?
Always. The, I just wanna say, if you've been watching television, our public safety is just eons ahead of what you see in these big cities and, and people doing, and they can't control pri- uh, crime and all those issues. So I wanna compliment both our, our police and the firemen on, on the job you do here and the confidence this community has in you. So, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.